Those of you who are here in the audience, thank you. For those who are tuning in on Riverside Cable, Channel 6 at home, this meeting will be posted to our website. It will also be available on DVD in our library. So let us proceed with the first meeting. This is the Riverside Village Board of Trustees, Public Hearing for the Proposed Tax Levy for the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library. It is Monday, November 19th, 2012, at 7:30. We are in Riverside Township Hall, Room 4, at 27 Riverside Row. And I will ask our village clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Salz.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Sachi.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
President Gorman.
Here.
Not with us this evening is trustee Mark Shovitz. Also present at tonight's meeting, Village Manager Peter Scolera, Village Attorneys Lance Molina and Michael Mars, and Village Clerk Kathy Haley.
Thank you very much, and we have a quorum, so we shall proceed. This public hearing, I will first acknowledge the publication notice that was published in the newspapers, a statutory requirement. And with that, I will turn to our village manager and ask him to present the 2012 Tax Levy Presentation for the Village of Riverside and Riverside Public Library.
Okay. My presentation will be very brief, because unfortunately, our finance director, who would normally be here giving the presentation, has fallen ill and is unable to join us this evening. Basically, the village board reviewed the estimate of the 2012 property tax levy which was announced pursuant to state statute at our November 5th, 2010 Board of Trustees Meeting. The notice was published in the landmark on November 7th, and the tax levy is to be collected in 2013. The 2012 tax levy for the village is $4,426,273 for corporate purposes and police pension, and $966,973 for debt service, of which $420,603 will be abated, for a total village levy of $4,972,643. This is the public hearing. Later on in the regular meeting, you will have your first reading with final adoption of the levy on December 3rd. With that, that concludes the presentation of the 2012 tax levy.
And those numbers include the levy for the Riverside Public Library?
Correct.
Oh, sorry. Yes. With that, we shall move on. Are there any questions or comments by any members of the audience? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn this public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Sussman. If you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned at about 7:33. We shall now move on to our second meeting of the evening. This is the Village of Riverside Public Hearing on the Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2013. And again, we are immediately following the public hearing on the 2012 tax levy. We are in Riverside Township Hall, Room 4, at 27 Riverside Row. And again, I will ask our village clerk to please call the roll for this public hearing.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Salz.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Sachi.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Not with us this evening, trustee Mark Shovitz. Also present, Village Manager Peter Scolera, Village Attorneys Lance Molina and Michael Mars, and Village Clerk Kathy Haley.
And adding my presence to the roll call.
I'm sorry.
I have a quorum, so we shall proceed. And again, I will acknowledge that the required statutory publication took place for this public hearing. And with that, I will turn again to Village Manager Scolera for the 2012 Budget Presentation for the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library.
Okay. The budget cycle that we are currently in, for staff began in July, and for the village board in August of this year. On August 20th, staff presented to the village board a five-year financial forecast and a 10-year capital plan. From this, staff went back to review our capital needs and made capital requests for the fiscal 2013 budget at our September 17th meeting. Staff incorporated recommendations and policy decisions from those two meetings and presented a draft budget at the village board's September 25th, 2012 Board Budget Workshop. All of the changes that have been discussed from those meetings as well as the one on October 15th and November 5th are incorporated in the schedule that is included in addition to the policy progression. The Riverside Public Library's budget and levy were discussed at their October 9th, 2012 meeting, and will be approved by their board on November 20th, 2012. As for the Village of Riverside's budget, the general fund changes that we, from the draft budget recommendation of $630 in the published proposed budget documentation, has been, with changes recommended by the board, has been revised to a surplus of $16 for fiscal year 2013. And with that, that concludes my public presentation.
Thank you, Peter. With that, I will open up the meeting to any questions or comments by the public. Hearing none, I will call this public meeting to a close and ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, a motion by trustee Reynolds and a second by trustee Sussman. If you would please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and this meeting is adjourned at about 7:37. We shall now move on to our third meeting of the evening. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting on Monday, November 19th, 2012, and this is immediately following the two public hearings which just took place, one on the 2012 tax levy and the second on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2013. We are in Riverside Township Hall, Room 4, 27 Riverside Row. During this meeting, comments may be made during the time identified for public comment on the agenda, or if the comments pertain to an agenda item, at the time that item comes up for discussion. In individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium, and should begin by identifying themselves by name and address, so that the village clerk can add this information to the meeting minutes. And once again, we will ask Kathy Haley, our village clerk, to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Salz.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Here.
Trustee Sachi.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
President Gorman.
Here.
Not with us this evening, trustee Mark Shovitz. Also present tonight at the meeting, Village Manager Peter Scolera, Village Attorneys Lance Molina and Michael Mars, and Village Clerk Kathy Haley.
Thank you, and we have a quorum, so we shall proceed. First, I would ask everyone to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I will ask trustee Sachi to please lead us in today's pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. We have no particular presentation scheduled for this meeting, so I will ask if there are any general public comments at this time. Seeing none, we shall move on. Yes, Gint, sir. Did it jump up there quick?
I know. You really have a rule tonight.
Look right past you. Thank you, I apologize.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. Gint, Leotsoveninkas, 265 Northwood Road. I'm here on behalf of the Olmsted Society to update you on some of the society's activities. Last week, we had the pleasure of hosting a visit from the University of Maryland American Architectural History Professor Isabel Gourney. She was here in preparation for a presentation that she'll be giving at a symposium in Paris next month on William LeBaron Jenny. Mr. Jenny, as many of you may know, is significant to the Village of Riverside for, among other things, overseeing the completion of Olmsted's plan of the village, as well as designing several homes here in the village, including his own. Mr. Jenny is also credited for being the father of the skyscraper. So a few of our members hosted her for two days here, took her on a bike tour of the village, and she spent some time also doing research in our library and at the museum. And then, just lastly, I just wanted to mention that in January, the Olmsted Society will be having its annual member meeting here in the village hall, which will take place on the 18th of January at 7:30 PM. And we invite everyone to join us at that time. That's all for this evening.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else at this time? Seeing none, we shall continue on with the meeting. The reports of the village officers, the village president's report. In addition to a number of meetings, I will just mention two items at this time. One is, last week, myself and our recreation director were scheduled to appear before the Lions Township Village, excuse me, the Lions Township Board of Trustees at their meeting. I was not able to attend, and our creation director, Ron Malky, he was there. And the point of that was to just close the book and thank them for the grant that we received from Lions Township about a year and a half ago. I think the amount was about $110,000. It covered the improvements that were made in this Indian Gardens area, to the tennis courts, the baseball fields, and to the parking lot. Ron gave the township supervisor and his trustees a presentation with some pictures, letting them know how thankful we were for receiving that grant for them. So I want to thank Ron for doing that last week. Also, attended a lively discussion luncheon today at the City Club of Chicago dealing with pension reform. Trustee Sussman was there also, along with about 200 other interested business leaders and municipal officials to hear. Three mayors, Mayor Chris Canning, who is the president of Willmanton, the president of the Northwest Municipal Conference, Jerry Bennett, who is the mayor of Halas Hills, and the president of the Southwest Suburban Municipal Conference, and Sam Pulea, the mayor of Westchester, who is the president of the West Central Municipal Conference. The three of them presented the municipal perspective on the need for pension reform dealing not just at the state level, but with municipal pension obligations, primarily for public safety, both police and fire pension reform. So it was a lively discussion. Don't have an answer at this point, but what I came away from the meeting was a consensus from all that you need to have all interested parties around the table. Coming out of Springfield Chambers at midnight on the last day of session is not a collaborative way to institute any policy. So there needs to be a lot of discussion, and I trust it will take place with a broad spectrum of people. Do you have anything else at this time? So with that, we shall move on to the village manager's report.
I do not have a report for this evening.
You sure you don't want anything else? Thank you, Peter. Village attorneys report.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Lance. Okay, we shall continue, move on to the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening is the approval of the bills of November 19th, 2012. Approved Village Board of Trustees Executive Session Meeting Minutes of November 5, 2012. Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of November 5, 2012. File and Review Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Meeting Minutes of August 14th, 2012. File and Review Landscape Advisory Commission Special Meeting Minutes of August 14th, 2012. Their regular meeting minutes of August 14, and their regular meeting minutes of September 11, and the LAC Special Meeting Minutes of October 9, 2012. And lastly, file and review Riverside Historical Commission Meeting Minutes of September 25, 2012. Does any trustee require any item to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion?
No, but I did receive a request from trustee Sussman in regards to the November 5th regular meeting minutes. In it, she, there are a couple grammatical errors that we will correct. And then, under item, under the Finance Personnel Preservation, item number three, trustee Sussman has asked or requested a sentence he inserted, just identifying that the finance director indicated that she would need two days to make the suggested adjustment to the budget.
So I think we can, unless anybody has an objection, we can.
She actually said one or two.
We can add trustee Sussman's comments under. I don't think there's any reason to.
And it cost me two cupcakes.
So Google me.
No, I don't.
With that, can I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Reynolds, a second by trustee Valerie. Would you please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
And the consent agenda is adopted. Thank you. We shall now move on to reports of the board chair, finance, personnel, and preservation. Trustee Sachi.
Thank you. The first item I have this evening is the first reading of the Tax Levy Ordinance for the year 2012 for the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library. The village board reviewed the estimate of the 2012 property tax levy which was announced pursuant to state law at the November 5th, 2012 Board of Trustees Meeting. The public notice for the tax levy hearing was published in the landmark on November 7th, 2012. The 2012 tax levy is to be collected in 2013. The 2012 tax levy for the village is $4,426,273 for corporate purposes and police pension, and $966,973 for debt service, of which $420,603 will be abated, for a total village levy The 2012 tax levy for the Riverside Public Library in the amount of $996,700 will be approved by the Public Library Board of Trustees at their next board meeting, November 20th, 2012, prior to the village's adoption of the ordinance on December 3rd of 2012. Due to scheduling conflicts, the Riverside Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting in November needed to be rescheduled. And this is merely a first reading, not requiring action on our part.
So with that, is there any comment? Not?
The only comment I have is there was a Scrivener's error, but the correct information wasn't the truth of taxation law of the publication. So Ms. Haley just handed me, so these would be substitute. I want to pass those down. The year was wrong.
Shall I continue?
Yes, please.
All right. The next item I have is the first reading of an ordinance for the 2013 budget for the Village of Riverside and the Riverside Public Library. The budget cycle began in July for village staff and in August for the village board. On August 20th, 2012, staff presented to the village board a five-year financial forecast and a 10-year capital improvement plan. From this meeting, staff then reviewed the capital needs of the village and made capital requests for fiscal year 2013 that were discussed on September 17th of 2012. Staff incorporated the village board recommendations and policy decisions from those two meetings when presenting a recommended budget on September 25th of 2012 at the village board budget workshop. All changes from this meeting, the village board meeting on October 15th and November 5th of 2012, are incorporated in the schedule that is included in addition to the policy progression. Public notice for the budget hearing was published in the landmark on November 7th, 2012. This is the first reading of the budget ordinance with adoption scheduled for December 3rd of 2012. The Riverside Public Library's budget and levy were discussed on October 9th, 2012, and will be approved by their board on November 20th, 2012. The budget is the main policy document of the village, and one of the most important is it identifies the services to be provided and their funding sources. The general fund changes from a surplus of $630 in the proposed budget documentation for the budget workshop of 9/25 to a surplus of $16 in this revised budget, and attached as a table summarizing proposed budgets for all of the village's funds and the library.
And since this is the first reading, this will be taken up for adoption at the December 3rd, 2012 meeting. Is there any comment or discussion at this time?
I would just like to just clarify one thing, and I did clarify this with Peter, but I just want to make sure everyone is on the same page. On page 177 and 178, when we talked about the CIP, specifically on the fire equipment replacement, it still shows in the notes that we looked at that the replacement of the SCABA was grand contingent, when in fact, we all voted that it was not going to be grand contingent. And that does say so as we move forward, but I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, because it wasn't clear to me. And if we do not.
Did we all vote for to make that?
What we're agreed to do was not make a grand contingent, but we would need to bring the purchase request back to the board for approval.
If the grant's not received.
If not.
And when do we expect to know about that grant? Has it already been applied for?
It's already been applied for.
When is it?
Normally, we probably will know either December or early January, is what we were told.
Of this year.
And in that regard, I solicited and received letters of support from both Congressman Lipinski and Congressman LuTieres. LuTieres becomes our congressman, along with Lipinski under the remap, to try to help our position with respect to those grants. I think we also talked about that.
Which is helpful. But I just wanted to reiterate the fact that if we do not get the grant, our CIP, because it was, I believe it was our intention to go ahead and buy this equipment, whether we got the grant or not, of course, we were going to go for the grant. But if we do not get the grant, our CIP would be a negative balance at year end of $88,000. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
But I think that the board's consensus was that that would be decided. If the grant was not received, then that issue, it was not automatic that we would go ahead, but it would come before the board and a decision would be made at that time, correct? Okay.
But still, the fact is, if we decide that.
If we do it.
Decide that we're going to be.
We have to fund it.
Right. We have to fund it.
Right.
In the past, we've talked about our revenues over surpluses, and we've always, well, we had till recent, the policy of keeping our revenues in the undesigned reserve to give you the maximum flexibility. What I would like to propose for the year of 2013, just because we would fall into negative, because I think it's important that we do replace this equipment, but as we move into 2013, that we have a consensus on the board now to take any revenues over surplus for the year of 2013 and dedicate that to our CIP. Since we voted tonight to raise taxes by 3.8%, I think it's important for us to tell our residents what those tax dollars are going for. And, you know, right now, they are all going, because we have a balanced budget, they're all going for operations. But in the past, in the past 10, 11 years, 99% of those years has ended up in surpluses over expenditures. And I would like to move to have the surpluses in 2013 dedicated to the CIP, since CIP will be either in a negative, or even if we get a half of the grant, three quarters of the grant, or whatever, will be depleted to a point where it needs to be starting to be refunded, or refueled. So I would like to at least have a consensus in the board that we put those surpluses in 2013, next year's surpluses, if there isn't, that we dedicate that to CIP. And I think that also gives our department ads incentive to even hold the line more, because they know that their CIP needs will then be covered, or a portion of those needs will be covered, if they do their jobs. I mean, I'm not saying they don't do their jobs very good, because obviously, they do their jobs very well. But it's just, that's another, I think, another level in terms of our department ads.
That's a fundamental budget policy shift that I think, we traditionally review budget policy as a whole. How often? Once a year in the spring or something like that? Don't we do that? We always review budget policy in general, of which what Joe's talking about is a component, and it should be done at that time.
In August.
In August. I mean, we just reaffirmed that policy at our last review, which was, did we do that in August?
Yes.
We talked about it then, so, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I'm not prepared to make that budget change, I mean, that policy change tonight. I don't know if.
I understand what you're saying, Lonnie, but I don't think that you can only make a policy change in August. And I think what.
I'm not saying you can only do it, but we just got through reaffirming the current one. Now you want to change it again already?
Well, I think the board was pretty split on it, so I think in fairness to Joe, I think he has every right to say, I'm still concerned about the fact that we're going to be operating in the red, potentially operating in the red, or be at zero. And you know how I feel about it. I think we should be transferring some of the money that we have into, let me finish, Lonnie. Transferring some of the money that I know from the reserves, not only because we've been kind of living off of the million dollars that was transferred into capital, and you know better than, as well as anybody else, that we don't have a source for capital at this point. So we had, so a previous board put a million dollars into the capital fund, and we've pretty much depleted it, and this board has not added any more to the capital fund. So I think that that, in the interest of being open about this, we should consider it before we run out of money. And then, the other point that I wanted to make, and then I'll let you, if you want to buy cupcakes afterward, that's fine.
Don't buy Twinkies.
No, don't buy Twinkies. They've been around for a while. But then, the other point I wanted to make is, the other part I'm concerned about, in addition to not having capital, we know we're going to have capital expenses, we're not allocating, we're not telling residents that we've got capital dollars. The other concern I have is that, I've been thinking about this recently, that we have a levy. And when we issue the levy, we say we're going to spend the levy on these items, and we're going to allocate the money accordingly. And we've had a surplus for virtually the last 10, 12 years, and some of that surplus in the past was used for village, or at least designated for village expenditures, for capital items. But I'm concerned that we're not being transparent with residents, because we're levying dollars year after year after year, based on the assumption we're going to spend them, and we don't. And we put them in a reserve account, and we don't tell residents how we're going to spend them. And the purpose of the levy is not to set up. The purpose of the levy is not to set up a savings account. It could be if we tell residents that, but we don't. And my concern is that we are misleading, and actually deliberately misleading residents. Don't raise your eyebrows at me like that.
We.
You're so wrong.
Thanks, Lonnie.
We're talking about the budgets, I presume that is within proper subject of a budget discussion, that a trustee can put forth a policy change. So Joe has put forth the policy change, and he has a motion. If there's a second, then it will be considered.
Second.
There is a second, it will be considered by the board tonight. Trustee Sachi is also correct. This was asked and answered by the board, and there was typically a certain time that that was not yet. He is right about that. That does not abrogate another trustee's ability to do that tonight.
Hey, we're persistent, Lonnie.
The allegation that this board is misleading the public is just bizarre. I mean, you're darn right, we have an undesigned reserve, and that undesigned reserve is there to meet expenses as they come due, and the residents know that, and we own it. So with that, Joe, you know, you know, we have the right to do that.
And the reason I brought this up tonight was mainly for the fact that next year, if we, when we do all of our capital and we do this SCABA program. year, if we, when we do all of our capital and we do this, this, this SCABA program, and I believe we should, we will either be in a deficit in our capital, or we'll be near deficit. And I think this, this is the time we should be talking about how we refund that, and it would be, it would be, I think, looking forward that we, we dedicate 2013 reserves to it. That's-
Any, any further discussion?
Yes. And, and once again, I think that it's, that it's, it's not ideal policy to assume that we're always going to have a surplus because we did for the last X number of years. As we all know, it's harder and harder every year to generate a surplus because our expenses go up faster than our revenues do. And so, I would still like to see the board, and I know I have failed in the past to convince the board to assign a revenue source to capital, and I still am in favor of assigning sales tax revenue to capital. And I, and I would rather, I would still rather see us do that, rather than just say, well, we're going to just, you know, give what I call blood transfusions to the capital fund. And, and of course, you know, you can't operate that fund in the red. But if, if, if it comes up to this board to vote to purchase this fire apparatus equipment, at that time, we will have to do a fund transfer because like Joe just pointed out, it would be $88,000 short. So, I mean, it isn't like saying, well, we'd be stymied and not be able to do it if we don't do that. And anyway, you wouldn't be making that, that would have to be done sooner anyway because we're going to find out in December or January if you're going to get that grant. And then, you're not going to be able to transfer a surplus till the end of next year. So you're still going to have to fund that. So making, saying you're going to make a policy change to start funding the 2013 surplus, if there is one, into the capital fund, isn't, isn't affecting that purchase. So I'd, I'd rather see, you know, this, I mean, I, I am not in favor of making this policy change at this time.
You will have an opportunity to vote when the vote is called.
Okay.
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment on, on what you said. I, I do understand, Michael, what, what, what you said. I have to say that this board does not have a policy on saving money on the surplus. Seems to me that when you do a budget and you, you issue a levy and you don't use that levy, then you're under an obligation, especially after several years of doing this, of telling residents what you're going to do with the money. If we think our reserves are too low, then we should change our policy and say, given these economic times, given the fact that EADs may still be going down, we need to increase our reserves for emergencies. That's a policy decision. Storing the money in, in a, just saving the money year after year is not a policy decision. And I do think that residents should know how we're using their tax dollars. So anyway, I politely disagree with you.
I think the, from what trustee Valerie is saying, the difference, Lonnie, is, is that when we were discussing this before, we had capital money. So when we, when we had this, we had the policy of not putting surpluses at year end into capital, which is what prior boards have done, it's because we had capital funds. Now, with this, with this budget, we're going to be out of capital funds. So it seems to me that warrants going forward, I mean, you're, now you're saying that you want a revenue source, Joe has given you a revenue source of, of putting future, future surpluses into the capital plan. Because the, because if I, if I understand what you're saying, what you would prefer to do is kind of a one-off system. Basically, we would not have any money in a capital plan. We would have a reserve fund, and as capital needs come up, we would decide on them one at a time.
No, no. As I've said before, I'd rather give it a revenue source that's there every year, like sales tax, rather than assume you're going to have a surplus. That way is more of a one-off because that, that policy just assumes that you're always going to have a surplus to transfer over. So no, that's not what I said. What I said is I'd rather give it a consistent and relatively stable revenue source so we kind of know what's going to be there every year and can plan accordingly.
Then how would we, we had the discussion, how would we make up the difference for, we use that sales tax now for balancing the budget, to quote my friends on the board. So how would we make up the difference? That was, I believe, the discussion, why, what, when you proposed that, and we said, but then we don't have the money that we count on. So in effect, we don't have a source for capital. It's sort of like robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Well, not exactly, because if, if we directed staff to give us a balanced budget, then they would have to give us a balanced budget minus that revenue source. And then if we wanted to make adjustments, if, if we say, well, we don't like this because it's cutting this or that service, then we could make the adjustment at our discretion during our, during our regular budget workshop.
If, nothing further, we have a motion and a second on the table for this policy change regarding surplus going forward. If you would please call a roll.
Could you repeat it? Because I think you said something different than what you proposed. In other words-
I made a motion.
Excellent, sorry. Joe, could you repeat your motion, please?
Motion is that the 2013 surplus, if it is surplus, would be dedicated towards capital.
Just the 2013, thank you.
2013.
Please call a roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
No.
Trustee Sachi?
No.
Trustee Valerie?
Aye.
So that motion carries? Thank you, and will be implemented. I think we're done discussing the first reading on the budget. I think you have more?
Yes. The next item I have is the first reading of the property tax abatement ordinances for 2012 property tax levy collected to pay the principal and interest on Series 2011 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, alternate revenue sourced for the water system, and Series 2005 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, alternate revenue sourced for the water system. The above referenced bonds were issued in 2011 and 2005 respectively.
I think because it involves, at first I was thinking it's only policy, and it's not actual spending of money, policy vote would, would stand for now, but I think it is designating funding source and that the motion does not pass three to two.
So even though it's not spending money?
Right, I mean, it's, it's a gray area, but I think, I mean, I, I think it's, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it be where you have three votes in favor of something the president would vote?
Well, what I was thinking, it, it doesn't actually involve designating spending the money, even though it's allocating, it involves money. So normally, to spend money, you need four affirmative votes, okay? A majority of the whole board. Here, it's a policy directive, you're not actually writing checks based on this. It's, it's a gray area, but I think, I think the president should vote in order to-
Before, can I just ask a question? Does that mean that anytime we make a policy change that involves shifting money from one account to another for people, you need to have that kind of vote? Because isn't that similar to that?
It's similar.
What's the difference then if I say I'm going to combine two accounts?
Well, my, my initial impression was you didn't need to. You could set the policy for now with just a majority of a quorum here, because you're not actually spending the money. But I think Michael felt, maybe there was, how do you feel, Michael?
Gentlemen, would you like to take this under advisement, come back to us at the next meeting?
Sure, let's do that, if that's okay.
So in the meantime, this, this motion does not have any immediate impact at this point anyway, so.
All right, well, at, at the next meeting, I will not be here.
Yes, that's the problem, because Joe's like, no, the next meeting. But I agree with you, I mean, it seems to me that the intent of the four vote-
Yeah, is to spend money.
Right, because we should have four votes.
No. Do you agree with me or not?
Yes, we should, yeah, we should have four votes.
It was Joe's motion, would you please come back to us at the next meeting with an opinion on what's necessary? And I think if the board's willing, we'll wait until Joe is going to be here at the next meeting. Is that, I have no problem with that. I understand, I, I think I understand the defer.
We're back on the 18th, at the 18th meeting, the next meeting, and-
Okay?
All right, I'm sorry about that.
That's fine, it's better, better, better now than later. All right, I think trustee Sachi, you were in the midst of-
I was, yes.
First reading?
That's all right. The above referenced bonds, can we shut the door?
Excuse us for a moment, the Riverside Township Hall is always a busy venue, and because of our recording of these meetings, it is not possible for us to always close, securely close the door. So we thank Michael Mars for acting as a policeman there. He's not very effective, since we still hear them out there. All right, we'll, we'll trust Michael Mars will quiet the enthusiasm of some of our Riverside residents out there. You cannot close the door because of the cables. You have been on the board for how long, Lonnie?
Too long, too long.
Okay, there you go. If you, you would please resume.
Thank you. The above referenced bonds were issued in 2011 and 2005 respectively. Property taxes were to be levied through 2022 and 2018 as part of the bond ordinances to provide security for the bondholders. The Village of Riverside has adequate funds in the Water Sur Fund to cover the debt service payments for the tax levy year 2012, and therefore wishes to abate the property tax levy related to these bonds as intended at the issue date. The 2013 Water and Sur Fund budget includes the expenditures for the above referenced debt payments. And this is merely a first reading, and no action on our part is required this evening.
So is there any discussion on this ordinance?
This is the same as a previous year's, just a little changed, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so this will be up at our next meeting. Trustee Sachi, you have one other item?
My last item is in the form of a resolution, which directs the reduction of the 2012 tax levies by the Cook County Tax Extension Office if necessary. For the past several years, the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees has provided direction to the Cook County Clerk's Office of Levies, Budgets, and Tax Rates to reduce our tax levy to match the village's policy objectives. Before 2009, the entire reduction was taken from the corporate levy line item. Since 2009, the reduction has been taken from all line items except the police pension levy. The Village Board agrees to follow this policy and reduce all levy line items except the police pension levy for the 2012 tax levy. The attached resolution will direct the county clerk to reduce our tax levy line items if necessary, except the police pension tax levy. And I motion that this board adopt a resolution directing the reduction of the 2012 levies from all line items except the police pension fund by the Cook County Tax Extension Office if necessary.
Second. So a motion by trustee Sachi and a second by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Sachi?
Aye.
Trustee Valerie?
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted. Anything further, trustee Sachi?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Public Works Transportation and Utilities, trustee Sells.
Mr. President, we have several items tonight. The first one is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a service provider contract with Municipal GIS Partners, MGP, for an amount not to exceed $36,450. The GIS consortium is a public entity consisting of local governments that works collectively to achieve the benefits of GIS and related technologies while reducing the risk and cost of developing a GIS program. In April of 2008, the village officially became a member of the GIS consortium. Through the consortium's collective bargaining power, the village is able to utilize the services of a variety of professionals at considerably less than it would cost to hire these services on the open market. Municipal GIS Partners, which is a service provider for the GIS consortium, and staff have achieved several accomplishments over the past years, including continued development of the village's utility system data, continued development of planometric features and base mapping, and development of utility plots for Public Works. In addition, the consortium's release of Internet mapping services to the public and an updated map office has allowed much of the data and information developed over the last two years to be available to the residents of the village and to the general public. These services provide for the distribution of zoning information, property identification numbers, school districts, voting precincts, and FEMA flood zone advisements. These services also lend basic GIS tools to village staff without the need to invest in software licenses as what, as was traditionally required. Funding is included in the fiscal year 2013 budget for the continued implementation of the village's geographical information system. A total of $45,000 has been budgeted for GIS in 2013, 50% of which will come from the water fund, and 50% is programmed in information technology, which is located in the general fund. So I move to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a service provider contract with Municipal GIS Partners for an amount not to exceed $36,450.
Second.
So we have a motion by trustee Sells and a second by trustee Sussman. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Sachi?
Aye.
Trustee Valerie?
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing the village board to approve a resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for the use of $20,000 in motor fuel tax funds for the 2012 alley reconstruction project. During the 2012 reconstruction season, alleys between York Road and Lindbergh Road were reconstructed. The majority of project funding was derived from an Illinois Green Infrastructure Grant. Part of the original project funding plan was to use $20,000 in motor fuel tax funds to satisfy a portion of the local match. Use of motor fuel tax funds requires formal adoption of a resolution by the local governing body authorizing the use of the funds. So I move to approve the resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code authorizing the use of $20,000 in motor fuel tax funds for the 2012 alley reconstruction project.
Second.
So we have a motion by trustee Sells, second by trustee Sussman. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is a question probably for Peter rather than Ben. This, these new green alleys that we did, what do, do we have to adopt some kind of maintenance schedule for these on a regular basis?
We have.
We have, and what is that?
It's a maintenance schedule that dictates how the alleys and parking lot will be, snow and ice will be removed, general annual maintenance of filling in the, the grooves for lots of-
Filling them in? I thought you were supposed to leave them open.
Well, make sure they're clear of, of materials. And just, just overall maintenance of, of some of the bags as well.
And, and so are we, do we have to purchase any new equipment in order to maintain these, like a, like a sweeper of some kind?
No, what, the, the material, the plow, we have, we already have a plow that we can use that will work for it. And actually, we've been told not to use any plows, so we'll, we'll be using some of the experimental beet juice and stuff on, on that stuff, so.
So we're not going to plow those areas?
We will clean, remove the snow, but it won't be your traditional with, with one of those big plows that goes in and pushes all the snow up.
You're going to use the sweeper?
Either the sweeper, or they have plows that have like a rubber edge along the bottom that won't hit the pavers and chip them. And we already have that, so.
Okay, and, and, and that takes care of the snow issue. What, what do you do to, to stop the, you know, to make sure that the pavement remains permeable by not allowing buildup of things in the grooves?
That's basically just, it's, it's, it's either sweeping, or they have a specialized machine that you can use that goes kind of almost like a vacuum.
And we have this machine?
No, we, we-
That's what I asked.
We're going to utilize the sweeping part of it. But the plan, the maintenance plan was part of the grant requirements that we had to adopt, and Burke Engineering, who helped us with the grant, assisted in putting that plan, that maintenance plan together for us, which Public Works has adopted.
Okay, I'm asking, Gene, remember when you and I met with one of those paver vendors and-
It's important to keep-
They discussed the importance of, of maintenance on those things, so, okay. So we have a plan in place?
Yes.
Doesn't require purchase of any more equipment?
Not at this moment.
Oh, what's really requiring is time of our Public Works Department to maintain these things and training.
Which we've already, we're beginning.
All right, thanks.
Speaking of the Green Infrastructure Grant, the village had hoped to have the lights in the green parking lot in time for the holiday stroll. What is the status of that?
As of right now, they, we're expecting them, still this week, so hopefully, they will be up and installed before the November 30th holiday stroll.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you have a motion and a second. Yeah, we have a motion and a second, so, by trustee Sells and trustee Sussman. So if you would please call a roll, thank you.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Sells?
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds?
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted.
Next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $40,000 to the Suburban Tree Consortium to facilitate payment for the Century of Trees reforestation project. Village staff has worked to support Ms. Shannon Lang's Girl Scout Gold Award Project, A Century of Trees. The goal of the project has been to solicit donations to provide for the planting of 100 trees on public land throughout the village. Donations for the projects were made to the Village of Riverside, which created a restricted account to accumulate the donations. To date, donations have been received for the planting in excess of 100 trees, and in excess of $34,000 has been collected. Trees for the project were obtained through the Suburban Tree Consortium, and approval of the purchase order will provide for the payment of the invoice. So I move to authorize the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $40,000 to the Suburban Tree Consortium to facilitate payment for the Century of Trees reforestation project.
So a motion by Trustee Sells, a second by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on this item, which we have discussed at a number of prior meetings?
I just have a question for Peter. Excuse me, Mike, I'm sorry. I, I noticed that the invoice is 32 and a half, and the purchase order is 40,000. Are we just, money's still coming in? Is that the idea? Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Are trees planted next year or even because of-
No, right, no, I just noticed that the consortium dollars were less than what we're authorizing. That's all. I just wanted to-
James, we'll ask some flexibility in the amount that we do need to go, we have a kind of like a ceiling.
But to Mike's point, some are still going to be-
In the spring, yes.
Planted, not this year?
Not this year.
All in the spring?
All in the spring.
Okay.
With that, I would ask our village clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted.
Next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to purchase rock salt for the 2012-2013 snow and ice control season through the State of Illinois Central Management Services from Morton Salt for an amount not to exceed $21,281.40. The Village of Riverside has historically purchased rock salt for snow and ice control measures through the State of Illinois Central Management Services. CMS provides, compiles rock salt purchase, purchase quantities from participating agencies throughout the state, then competitively bids the total amount. Each municipality can then draw its designated purchase amount at its bid price. The village recently received notification that the 2012 rock salt bid price is $50.67 per ton. The 2011 bid price was $58.66 per ton, and the approved purchase order amount was $49,274.40. The 2010 bid price was 58, was 56.68 per ton, and the approved purchase order amount was $39,676. The Department of Public Works will begin the 2012-2013 snow and ice control season with approximately 700 tons of rock salt, rock salt on hand. It is estimated that 1,000 tons of rock salt are applied to the village's streets during an average winter. The department requested 350 tons of rock salt through the CMS bid process, which allows the purchase of 120% of the requested amount, 420 tons, at the bid price. So I move to authorize the village manager to purchase up to 420 tons of rock salt for the 2012-2013 snow and ice control season through the Illinois Central Management Services from Morton Salt at the cost of $50.67 per ton, and a total not to exceed price of $21,281.40.
Second. Motion by Trustee Sells and a second by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Are we doing the beet juice thing again this year? How did that work out last year?
Are we what, Lonnie?
Beet juice thing.
The pickle juice.
Director, family, did utilize it. He had mixed feedback on effectiveness. He hasn't abandoned it. He still does want to try it again, and he is exploring that possibility. I'm, I'm just hoping for a very mild winter, that we don't have that issue, but it's, it's something that we haven't abandoned.
I don't care, because I'm going to flirt anyway.
See, lucky you.
Hearing nothing further, I would ask that you please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is also adopted. Trustee Sells, you're not done yet? One more?
I have one more. A resolution authorizing the village manager to reject all bids received for SCADA system replacement project and to solicit new bids. The Village of Riverside has received a $100,000 grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for replacement of the operation and control equipment for the water distribution system. The equipment is commonly referred to as supervisory control and data acquisition, or a SCADA system. On November 6, 2012, one bid in the amount of $176,000 was received from Lyons-Pinner Electric. Village staff recommends that this bid be rejected and replacement bids be solicited. So I move to authorize the village manager to reject all bids received concerning the SCADA system replacement project and to solicit new bids.
Second. So we have a motion by Trustee Sells and a second by Trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on this item?
Why are we-
Didn't we already upgrade our control system when we made the water upgrades in the 2000s? I mean, as, as part of the switch over to the shared water tower? Why do we need to upgrade our control system again?
Well, a lot of it is just, my understanding is, is the electrical upgrade itself and some of the software update, and technology is constantly changing, so it's, it's, it's one that is needed in order to, basically, right now, somebody has to go to the facility to take the measurements. This upgrade will allow the information to be transmitted to the water supervisor's desk or the Public Works Director's desk, rather than having personnel go out and look at it. So it's more the ability to, to monitor the station and the water levels remotely as well.
How often does someone have to go do this?
Kevin Walter, on a almost daily basis, has to go to the station to, to make sure that it's pumping at the correct level and, and there isn't any drop in, in function.
How much this thing costs? You could hire three people to go do that every day.
Well, a lot of this is, is a needed upgrade for the electrical part of it. We did get a grant, and the intent was that the grant was going to pay for the full amount. Unfortunately, when, when the one bid came back, it came back higher.
Yeah, a lot higher.
We have gone back to, to this company as well as some of the others that had expressed interest in it to find out what caused the price to go up, and we think that we've resolved the questions and that we will get favorable bids on the next round.
Okay.
No, Peter answered my question. I was interested in what makes us believe the results would be different this time around, and you answered that.
This grant was obtained through the efforts of Representative Michael Zaleski in the last Capitol Bill of Illinois Jobs Now, so we are, on behalf of the village, we're quite hopeful that this comes in at this bid amount. If there's nothing further, if you would please call a roll on this resolution.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
This resolution is adopted, thank you. Anything further, Trustee Sells?
The only thing I wanted to do was mention this past week, Burlington Realty celebrated their 60th year of business in the village, and they had a really nice open house, and there were a number of people there. So I just would like to congratulate Burlington Realty and Judy Jisa, and wish them many, many more years of success in our village.
Judy Jisa's not over 60 years old, is she?
She was born in the office.
Very good, okay. Moving on, next is Public Safety, Health, and Landscape, Trustee Reynolds.
Mr. President, you have before you a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with Ray O'Hara and Company for the purchase of firefighter emergency response jackets using foreign fire tax funds in the amount of $12,330. The Foreign Fire Tax Board at the last board meeting voted to purchase 45 of the 3N1 emergency response jackets for all the members of the Riverside Fire Department. Ray O'Hara and Company was the lowest quote. The quote from Uniformity, Inc. was $12,825, and the quote from VGC, I'm sorry, VCG Uniform was $12,912.75. The proposed total purchase price from Ray O'Hara is $12,330, so I would like to move that we adopt this resolution.
Second. So a motion by Trustee Reynolds, second by Trustee Sells. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and this resolution is adopted. Anything further, Trustee Reynolds? Next up is River Parks and Recreation, Trustee Ballerine.
I just have a couple of points of interest. The Recreation Department is looking for help. We are looking for part-time instructors to help teach existing programs, or in some cases, create your own. We have classes that cover a wide range of interests and have immediate needs for the following positions: recreation sports instructor and dance tumbling instructor. You have to be 16 or, 16 or over, and all instructors will serve as a mentor and fun, positive and safe environment. Must be able, must be capable of teaching participation of various levels and ability, and if you're interested, please go to the Village Riverside website, and you can submit your application on there. Secondly, is the holiday stroll, which we will be discussing next. Friday, the 30th, the Recreation Department will be open from 5 to 9 for cookie decorating, which has been going on for the last several years and has always been a great fun, and the tower will be lit up again this year.
Very good. Thank you, Trustee Ballerine. Next up is Building, Planning, and Zoning, Trustee Sussman.
Nothing at this time. We do have a zoning board of appeals meeting on the 29th, and there are two zoning matters that will be before the commission.
Thank you. And last is Public Relations, Economic Development, and Open Government, Trustee Chevitz, who is absent from this meeting. I will ask the village manager to please handle this item in his absence.
What you have before you is a motion to approve the special event application submitted by the Riverside Chamber of Commerce for the 38th Annual Holiday Stroll to be held on Friday, November 30, 2012. For 37 years, the Riverside Chamber of Commerce has sponsored the holiday stroll in the Central Business District. Each year, the event has grown and is now a much anticipated start to the holiday season in Riverside. The event typically takes place on the first Friday after Thanksgiving weekend, with businesses opening their doors to the community after hours, and hosting special activities such as crafts for children's, pony rides, face painting, and musical performances.
I guess I would need a motion. I can't make that motion to-
So we need a motion and a second to adopt the special event application. Second. So a motion by Trustee Reynolds, second, we'll look at Trustee Ballerine for that over there. And is there any further discussion on this item? On behalf of the village board and all of our residents, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for this event, and it continues to exceed our expectations year upon year, and we will look forward to the same excitement as we've had the past years, and maybe we'll get some of that nice weather that those managers will force.
I can say one thing in, to add to that. At the last Chamber of Commerce meeting, they were talking about for the last several years, the chamber, every year, has been installing outlets in the, on the light post in our downtown area so that they can light the post, and they're actually going to complete that project this year. So they've been doing it, I think, for the last two or three years, and so as of this year, we'll be able to actually light up all of our, our lights downtown, and that's all thanks to the Chamber of Commerce.
Perfect. If you would please call a roll on this special event application.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is adopted. Is there, there is no new business, there's no need for an executive session. I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Trustee Reynolds, a second by Trustee Ballerine. If you would please call a roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Thank you, and the meeting is adjourned at about, what, 8:32 or 3? There we go. 33. Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving, because you have got to be around.